Okay, we're live.
So watch what you say.
I sent it out to me, I think.
Last time we did this, I got the mice swapped. So my mouse didn't work and the mouse here didn't work. Putting this over here for right now.
Somebody just pulled in. Matt, we need Matt.
Ross and Russ.
What? You didn't have enough excitement last night?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I read it tonight, yeah.
Just have to see. It's Matt? I noticed that auto replied that he was out in the field, but it didn't. There he is.
There he is.
It's all possible.
Yeah.
Most of them never get it.
I'm sure there is, but it's super easy to pull out.
Use my center down.
It's next to you. I think next to you. Should have done a longer table. There's a chair over there.
You want to go that way just a couple inches?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Legs are gonna be there. Just knock your knees.
All right. Let's wait for Russ. Curious. How's Russ doing? Okay, seven o'clock. So we're live, we're running? Yep, we are. Okay, good. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Bruce Colgrin. Welcome to this Temple Planning Board meeting. Officially call this meeting to order. First order of business would be approval of the draft minutes from July 15th. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Does anybody have any changes, edits, or comments? During that, I'll entertain a motion to accept minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Matt, how do you vote? Stayed, you weren't here?
Yes.
Okay, I vote yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Minutes are approved. Invitation for a public comment. Is there anybody that would have any comments at this time in the audience that would not pertain to the actual site plan review public hearing that we are going to open in a few minutes? Okay. Good. What do we want to do for four more minutes? What do we want to talk about?
We want to just briefly talk about the tax map thing.
Yep.
Because I don't think we got some emails from the company that is doing the GIS update and sorry. I feel like I talk pretty loud, but they're wanting to put a version out to go live. I don't know how others feel about that, but I have two comments on that. One is that I believe we'd already paid them for the updates for the 2023-24 changes, and those aren't done yet. So I'm not comfortable going live with a version that we know isn't done, especially given that we've already paid for that service. And then the other thing that was confusing to me is he asked for the plans. We don't, we've never provided the plans. We've always provided the file number for Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds and any other, you know, pertinent information in a spreadsheet. We've never provided plans. We've only recently started collecting electronic versions. So I'm confused by that question.
Yeah. I would think that we gave them the spreadsheet with all the listings. They can pull it themselves because it's going to cost us to make copies from the registry anyways. And we've paid them to do that, so.
Right.
I think that should be done before we accept anything, and they should be responsible for it.
Right. So my feeling is we should schedule a phone call maybe with Franco Rossi, who's been our contact person, rather than the person that has been emailing us. Just jump up a level.
Yep.
Since he's the one that signed the contract and just try to get this straightened out. Is everyone, does everyone agree that makes sense?
Yes, back in column tomorrow.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're pretty close to seven o'clock. Four here, so seven oh five.
I just have a comment. So we get emails on the group Temple Planning Board email. I think if somebody replies, could they reply all so that we know that the email got responded to because I generally am not going to respond to the emails, or at least do we have a point person? I'm sure it's like Christine's probably responding, but.
Or Russ.
So it's like somebody responding to that is unclear, so. In the future, we do either reply all or know that somebody's responding.
Yeah, warning about that. There's some RSAs around this and right to know.
Right to know, right.
Yeah, nothing should ever be discussed in their other about what we're actually, you know, any, any business, just for planning, scheduling.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but, but often we'll get an email with a question and I don't know if anybody's responded.
Yeah, we should have a policy.
Point person that we know is going to respond.
It is recommended that only one person do that sort of
That's fine.
Outbound stuff, but it's not a hard, hard and fast rule. So as long as we're not discussing board business, it's okay.
Yeah, I think we've all taken turns. I know I've responded to a few subdivision and zoning questions.
I think it's just more like I wouldn't want somebody to be asking a question and they'd never get a response because everybody's thinking somebody else responded to them.
That's a good point.
I thought we had said Russ was the point person for application questions.
Okay, and I
But I, I know Russ is sometimes busy, so I usually wait a couple days and then if I don't see, then I might ask him directly. That's usually what I do when it's related to that, something specific. But yeah, you're right for other general inquiries that might be.
Anyways, I think about that we at least we are on the same page or we have certain people.
Yep.
So Russ, you were subdivision question.
Okay. All right, well, I'm going to call this public hearing to order for site plan review regulations. I'll read the our notice. Pursuant to RSA 675, six and seven, the planning board will hold a public hearing on October, on October, on August 19th, 2025 at 7:05 PM at the Temple Town Hall on proposed amendments to the site plan review regulations and applications. The proposed amendments include formatting changes in order to provide clarity on the application procedures, strengthen stormwater management protections, describe landscaping and screening standards, and add definitions. The site plan review application was updated to match the proposed regulatory revisions. Section 11 related to large-scale development of utilities infrastructure was removed at the recommendation of town council, who found large portions that were not in compliance with state statutes. The planning board revised this section and proposed changes at a future public hearing. A full copy of the text of the proposed amendments is available for review in the town office during regular business hours or online.
You probably don't need to.
Yeah, I don't want to.
You want to.
Yeah. Yeah, so the proposed amendments were developed based on the 2024 HOP grant community engagement data with a consultant from Southwest Regional Planning Commission and paid forward funds from the Invest New Hampshire Municipal Planning and Zoning Grant Program. And I guess that being said, we
Yep, so I was just going to add that we've updated our subdivision regulations last year and our current version, our live version of the site plan regulations refers to the old version of the subdivision regulations or procedures. So that's part of the reason we're moving forward with updating it now versus going back and trying to change that other section 11 because that was pretty intense work that will need to be done on that. Do they have questions? You want us to go through it and did you, can you usually read through our stuff? I don't know if there's people coming in for the hearing or if that's.
Oh, yeah, that's the other subdivision party.
So I, my take on this evening, the lack of attendance for this public hearing, my, my feeling is that either people are all away on vacation or they trust that the planning board and the people that they elected to represent them have been working really hard on this for a while now and that they're, they approve of the changes we're making. And you know, we've, we've done everything the right way and given it a lot of thought and had outside input. So I think that we don't need to move forward with this hearing any longer. I think we can take a vote to accept what, everything we've been working on.
First close the hearing.
Yeah, close, yeah, close. So.
The only thing I was going to add is that I did look at the recent legislative, legislative changes and I didn't see anything. I don't know. Sarah is our consultant with SWR PC. The only, the only one that seemed potentially relevant was related to expirations of approvals if nothing has been started, but we don't have anything like that in ours regulations, so does not apply. So. That's my only.
Anybody else on the board have anything that you want to say? All right, well, hopefully 10 people don't walk in in the next three minutes. I'm going to, I'm going to take a chance and make a motion, somebody wants to make a motion to close the hearing, I guess we probably should vote on it.
Sure, so moved.
Second.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Yes, I vote yes.
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 Okay. Okay, the motion to close the hearing passes, so the hearing is now, the hearing portion of the site plan review regulations is now closed. I guess.
And then I would make a motion to approve the changes to the site plan regulations and yeah.
Yes.
Yes, okay, I vote yes.
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 Okay, I will, I don't know if I can remove the draft words from this or you have to do that, Russ, but connect tomorrow and we'll get it live on the website as well as the application.
That went well. Uh, new business, Randy Martin.
Randy, you need to use the microphone so you get recorded. Is it on?
Thank you. Thank you guys all for coming in. So. So basically for tonight, what I was thinking that we could just get caught up a little bit with the update of the PRD development that we're proposing called Morning Light Farm. And what I've given you guys is just a cover sheet of with Earl Sanford has finished pretty much infinitum, the details of development. There's a smaller copy that's more manageable for you guys to look at, and it's in yellow, which is the 12-acre parcel that we're thinking of subdividing and so essentially what we're doing is we're taking 12 acres out of 196 acres of the property, which is the main parcel that we have. And we're putting it into a open space conservation development with three lots. From lot A21, which is the 196 acres that essentially surrounds the yellow that you guys see. And the new PRD would be 12.73 acres, and that'll leave a remaining 183 acres in the main parcel. Earl's gone through and done the wetlands and the slopes and the circular acres that we've done in Stone Gate and the other developments. That seems to be a great way to do it. It's a circular acre and within that acre is where you can consider building the house and the rest of the lot goes into a conservation easement as does the open space. So in this particular thing we've added, I think there's an extra acre of conservation, open space and more than double the frontage. So it's a pretty generous formula from, from the regulations. Basically, Earl's finished the survey and the Bruce has the application for the subdivision. And then the abutters list is enclosed, and that's 24 people on that just because of the size of the parcel. And the mail out labels are there for the abutters notification. Also, the files are all set to be sent to the town electronically for review. I've given all of you guys a large scale map of everything so that you can really see the details. It's really down to the down to the rocks and leaves on this because it is such a cool piece of land. We really wanted to be sure that we considered everything with it and Peter came in, Peter Caswell, and did the test bits in June, and they worked out very well. That's on sheet three of the plan. And so I guess what we can talk about a little bit, if there's any comments that you guys have. But I think that I'd love to have any or all come and walk the grounds and see what, what everything is. It's all well marked for people to see. And the bugs are gone, so that's the main thing. So that's pretty much where we are right now. I'm hoping to ask respectfully to be on the meeting for September 2nd. I know that's the day after Labor Day, but that's the next meeting I think that you guys are considering. And in the meantime, if I could prevail upon you to kind of go over these and certainly any questions that you have. Earl's available, I'm available, and you know, we can certainly poke around and look at the, the land itself, but I think we're getting closer to a possible consideration for, for everything. That's pretty much where we are.
Is it possible to get an electronic version?
Yes.
Like before then?
Yep. We can do that. I can do that for you tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Excellent.
Is there an existing road in there? It says something about access.
Yes.
Is that where that morning? Morning light.
That road is existing. Yeah, it's been there. It's, that's kind of a big hayfield, so that's been there for a very long time.
So the road is going to go through one of the lots?
Yes, the first lot. And that first lot probably it's on there just because it's an access easement for people and the intent really is not to build on that lot because it's a really pretty hayfield, but down the road, who knows what, but every restriction and consideration is on there that could possibly happen. And as you can see on those, there's the setbacks from the lot lines and and the slopes, if there's any. It's pretty easy to see on the big sheets.
I think it's like the intent is irrelevant, like we have to determine if the buildable lot.
Exactly. Yep. You have to think of everything.
Yep. I don't know how that works for the private road through somebody's lot.
The easement?
Yeah, the easement, yeah. Yeah.
There's two easements in that first lot, first and second lot.
Right, this is a potential easement. This actually right now goes up to the hayfield. Yep. So if this was no longer hayfield, which who knows, you know, I just put it in as a just because it exists topographically. And this road, we use this road all the time for well, and that, and then this goes down to my house here.
So I think that easement would have to be part of your application.
So that could be contingent. I just wanted to see how you guys felt. And what we were going to do is have the covenants, which are going to be very simple, but include the easements and the things that we would do.
And you're planning to keep it as a private road now?
Yes, exactly.
Randy, where does this road end up?
That goes through the main covey field.
Okay.
And then it connects with Stone Gate, and then if you go down, it goes down to where the kennels are and down below. And that's been there since they built the dam, you know? But if you guys want to come and walk around, I'd love to have you guys there.
So each of these circles represents
The building site.
And but it's not all, they're different areas and then you're saying one acre circle.
So this, so this is a one acre circle and that shaded area is where the lot line, the lot line buffer is. So, and this is all open space here. And so within the circle, there's a center pin and it's, I think, 108 feet on its side, so it's 200 and something feet. And within that circle, according to the architectural permissions through the covenants, that's where people can do that. And then the rest of the space goes to conservation easements, including the open space.
Okay.
So it's a pretty cool way.
It's a PRD.
And it's pretty tried and true because we did the Stone Gate farm with that.
With the circle idea.
And everyone loves it. It completely works. So it's really a good thing.
So is there, is it a calculation with the PRD? Is it, is a calculation?
Yes.
Yes.
It tells the lots and the open space. And that's the thing. I mean, this is here for you guys to really look at and read and kind of understand. And I'm happy certainly at any time to do questions.
You use the word it's generous. So in other words, it's not like it's
It's not, it's not jammed.
You're, you're, you're you're going to have more open space than you actually
More open space and a lot more frontage. And the way, the reason why it's so cool is because the way the land is, it is perfect. These guys are really private. They're away from the road. This one has, you know, the road going through, so that's, that diminishes this a lot, which is great because this is so pretty here. We're really hoping not to ever have to build on that, but these two, and essentially the possibility is for my sister to live in one and maybe Allison in the other one. So it's kind of a little bit of a family oriented thing. And then we would continue, obviously, to use this road for the club and that kind of stuff.
So is, is this lot not able to be a house lot instead of this one?
No, they're all three, they're all three.
No, I mean the open space one.
Yes, no, that's not a house.
Too sloped?
No, it's, it's nice. It's just a big, beautiful field. We didn't want to jam it in. It, it works, and that's why I'm really excited for you guys to come look. It really works beautifully with the land.
Do others want to go look at it or what's the?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be fun. So anyway, just look through it and I, that's kind of a little bit of a yellow thing. I had magic marker front all afternoon.
I don't, I mean, there's, there's nothing that for a PRD, there's nothing really out of the ordinary here, Russ. I mean, the easement might be the only thing that
Right.
How that works.
And that's going to be very simple. It's going to be like the second Stone Gate that we did with just, you know, things that you can have 10 cars on the thing, you know? Bill knows about that and it's just a protection for the people mostly there. Everyone said all these restrictions and I'm like, no, they're good protections. It's just a good way to look at it.
Do we want to try to go before our next meeting to see it or a different day? I don't know what people's availability is.
It's very easy to get to.
I've, I've been there many times, so I, I, I'm very familiar with it, but I, I mean, I'll go again. Nobody else has been there. They really probably should so that we get an idea of what Randy's talking about with fields and the road because it is actually really nice and I've only been down to the bridge here, so. Yeah, that's a very nice piece of property.
And the bridge is about to be redone, as you guys probably all know.
Any day now.
They're starky like crazy on that road.
That's right.
That's good. Yeah, it's really, it's really a wonderful project. We're excited to contract, present it.
Well, the big thing I think would be, so you're looking, Randy, to our September 2nd meeting?
If that
Actually have a hearings, a butters hearing.
If, I mean, I think we're ready to.
Shouldn't. How do we do, is that work?
I, I can't comment on it. I would need time to look at.
Yeah, right back where I have to do it.
And see it.
We don't have to do it in my ticket.
We don't have to do hearing at the next one. I'm not ready to hear you. Yeah, the design review. Yeah, yeah, so we can't go right to a hearing.
Right. I don't think we can do a site visit until a public hearing is open. I would just run into that myself.
So.
Then I was told we couldn't. Public hearing is open.
So the next meeting for a design review, it does have to be posted. And abutters need to be notified.
Yeah.
But that's not final application.
Right.
So we're like three meetings away.
But any one of us can go up there or any three of us can go up there.
Sure.
And it wouldn't be a quorum, so.
Yeah, yeah, or we can post it and you know that we're going before.
Well, what do we, I guess let's back up. You were hoping to have an abutters hearing on our next meeting.
I was hoping to figure out what was appropriate, basically.
Yeah, so we, but we haven't even accepted. Accept the, accept his application.
Yep.
Which we would need to do. When?
For a design review.
For a design review. Could be done tonight or no? What are we missing?
It feels, I personally, I would, I need more time to look at all the
I think this is the way we turn it all in.
Right.
And then we all take a look at it at the next meeting.
That's
Accept it as complete.
Yeah.
And schedule the hearing and at that point, I think we can go look at it and do a lesson.
Right, that sounds good.
And I don't know how it works with the state approvals for the septic. Is that during the building permit process or? Because these lots are under five acres, so it would have to be a state. They've done the perk test and all that, but I think there's a state
There is.
Thing. State approval.
Right.
And what you may want, what I always do is wait till the town approval first.
Okay.
Because each lot's going to cost like $450.
Oh, is it?
We decide to change it.
Feeling a little poor, right?
You don't want to send that in, get it.
Exactly. Exactly, and that's why I was wanting you guys to have a whole big set, so you could really confer and confide and figure out what you wanted to do, and and come and look at it is the other thing too, and then you really get a feel for where, because I think it'll be contingent on the documents for the uh, you know,
The easement.
The covenant, covenants and the easements, and and that's pretty simple, we have it pretty much done, but I didn't wanna jump ahead too far, and then the state septic are the only two things I can think of.
If it's time sensitive, um.
It's not really.
Your recommendation of three people from the board going to meet with you is not a quorum, it wouldn't need to be posted. And or people could go individually, I don't personally need to go, I mean, I've seen it several times.
I'll bet you it works.
Yeah, I know, I know, I can help you give the tour, so. It, maybe that would be the way to do it, if you're not gonna drag this into November or something to.
Yeah.
You know, get approval, cuz it doesn't seem to me like there's going to be anything here that we're missing.
It's pretty complete, I mean, we've really, we've really tried to make sure there's, and I've gone through it with the butters and that, and done really little tiny details on it, and the commas in the sentence, so. So maybe come visit and then.
I mean, who wants to visit, let's see how many people wanna.
Well, I have a little complication.
You're a butter?
No, I'm getting knee surgery Monday and I'm.
About Sunday?
Yeah, there you go, you, you go on your own little field trip.
Exactly, anytime. We'd love to have you over anytime. And anybody.
Well, as long as there's not four of us, it technically is not a quorum, so that's the key, it can't be more than three.
And bring your doggies too, if you have dogs. The more the merrier, right?
So Randy, are you considering me in a butter?
Um I put you on there because you are um a budding on where it goes.
The big open.
The big open spit.
So flyway goes, or not flyway, Randy goes all the way here.
Yeah. Oh, that's that, this little.
That little flats field.
That easement, that's not getting.
Yeah, we really went through with the fine tooth comb, because it was very complicated with so many butters and distances and within a hundred feet and stuff. But I think we have it right.
My, from what I can tell, this, this is never gonna be actually turned into.
No.
Road, because it would cost a fortune and there's no point in it.
Yeah, but it's, you know, it's technically.
And I don't care anyway, so.
Right, it's all, it's all good. All right, well.
So I'm happy to come before the next meeting, I don't know what others' availability is, but I'm like. Oh, like, I meant like the day of our next meeting. But if that's too tight for others, that's fine. At like six, six fifteen, I mean, how much time?
In the morning?
No, God. You know me at all, Randy. Six PM if our meeting is at seven.
So that's.
Yeah, you might wanna hour and a half.
Five, can you do five? Can you, that's probably complicated for Carter.
I, let's just say yes, but I'm trying to figure it out, if not, I might have children.
Is that on the second then?
So you three, Carter, Russ and.
Unless you wanna go, cuz I can bow out, I'm, I'm gonna miss a couple meetings after. All right, so then that's. Well, then the three of you pick a time, and then I'll just connect with you.
Whatever works. Bruce won't let me go to the lake anymore, so.
I'll go for you.
All right, that was complicated.
Well, thank you guys very much, and any questions, certainly, just give a jingle.
Thank you, and yeah, and if you could send it electronically, and I could.
Yes, so.
Send that to Kathy or to you or to Bruce or?
Uh, send it to Kathy, that'd be great. Yeah, or yeah, just the planning board email. Temple, I think it's templeplanning@templenh.gov, right? I was assuming you'd seen it already. Like you've seen everywhere in town.
So.
It was easy to post it because it was just.
Yes. Yep, it's very easy to just posted that, yeah, if you're okay with members being open to members of the public. Okay.
That makes the most sense.
Yeah, let's just do that.
So you don't mind, so Kathy will post that note?
Yeah, let's, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Is the official address onward so that I know where?
So now, um Randy, do you uh feel like you know what we're looking for, for the next meeting from you as far as information?
Well, yeah, the uh and then I will get, um I guess.
So in order to do that, that means we have to post in the newspaper and send out letters to butters by Thursday. So that seems, I, sometimes I can do it and sometimes I can't, so I I, I know that I don't have time to do it this week, but.
We still have to accept it's complete right now.
Yeah.
I think we should do that at our next.
I think so too, and then it feels too rushed, if you're not under a time crunch.
Yes, unless I'm a butter, I'm gonna have to abstain from all this.
Yeah.
We'll have all this for the next meeting.
Say that if everyone takes a look at stuff, it may be email me that I'm already have I'm doing out the application stuff.
Yep.
Any comments, any thoughts, and then I can email Randy and say, here's the things that oh, you forgot this one thing, could you just have this by the next meeting?
Yeah.
That way, by the, when acceptance comes, you got everything.
Yep.
So I'm gonna so these are the.
So just hold on to that.
Application and labels are gonna be in Russ's possession.
Okay.
Okay.
But we're not gonna do anything with that until after the January.
Next meeting.
September second.
Yep.
Good. Is there anything else? Are we missing anything?
I don't think so.
No. Kathy's gonna post for the field visit, and we don't need to post anything for the meeting here.
Nope.
Um potentially, we will accept the application, and then set up a hearing.
Yep.
For the butters for the second meeting in September.
Yes.
And that. If it all works out perfectly, that's always gonna go. Thank you.
Um Kathy, on the agenda, just make sure you put PRD for Randy instead of subdivision, just so people, it's different criteria.
Okay. Thanks again. Good to see you guys.
They can stay if they want. Kick them out.
Now get out. Here's your hat, what's your hurry? Okay, uh next on new business on the agenda would be um uh preview of uh another subdivision plan for Haley and Jack Beal and Devon Guy, and Devon's not here. Yep.
Didn't know if we had to come aboard to show everybody.
That's fine, we can share it.
Yeah, just let us share them.
We wanna put this one another, they can mix their stuff up.
Okay, for this, let's remove it.
Okay, so I know that you've been working with um Matt, and Matt's on our board, and I, my take on Matt's position would be as long as he's not voting, I'm okay with him as chair letting Matt speak uh as their realtor.
Hmm.
Um, I just, you know, obviously, he shouldn't vote, he should abstain, but unless you guys have objection to Matt explaining the subdivision to us, so.
And, and I'm not, I'm not involved with this at this point.
Yeah.
Just we have a that, another problem they have, that they own listed for sale.
Yeah.
Yeah, nothing to do with.
Yeah.
So you, you're not, you're just still up the, up the street here.
Yeah, this is perfect.
I don't know if I find that a conflict with this piece of land.
Yeah.
Myself personally, but.
Well, if he's not involved in it directly, it's no contest.
Sting on that, this is just like our subdivision for our person, so he doesn't have any.
So what are we looking at?
So this is Peterborough Road here.
Yep.
Yeah, so basically, what we're trying to do is take a little over six acre lot off of Lot Two B Seventy One, so it's taking. No, it's sixty-three, so this is an existing lot, this is Two B Seventy One, and this is the new proposed lot that we're trying to take off of this lot.
Okay, so just one new.
Yeah, we're just creating one new six point three three acre lot off of um, yeah, it's coming off of Two B Seventy One, and that one's currently sixty-two point nine acres.
Was that the, the lot we did?
The one that, it was on the other side of Two B Seventy One, so it was the other end of that lot.
Wait, that's the one we created, that thirteen acre lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where is this actually, in relation to forty-five?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, you guys did with my dad, the subdivision on the other side of that lot, this one's on the opposite side of it.
And much smaller.
Yes.
And this is the stonehouse?
Uh, the stonehouse is on.
This is the castle. I call it castle.
Yeah, so this lot is the, where the stonehouse is on, cuz the pond, like Lake and Lake is down here, so the stonehouse is on this lot, the castle's on this lot, this is just in between.
In between the two buildings, yeah. That's it, I know, now I know we've, yeah, the pond's down here. So you are going to create a lot that is gonna be how many acres now?
Uh, six point three three.
And the frontage you have?
Um, he's, I, I was looking on here, I'm pretty sure he said it's three oh six or three oh seven, but it's above what the minimum is needed.
Got the two fifty square, um, have you had the chance to do any perk tests? Pete has been.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are you gonna put a driveway on?
So there's an easement through. Yeah, so this, yeah, this lot has an easement all the way through it that has access to our existing lot, because the entrance to the driveway for this house is on the new lot, so, but there's already an existing easement, so it's kind of like a share, it would just continue to our new lot, so there's access to that lot and where we would be like putting, wanting to put our house already.
So this is where you wanna build, right here with this?
Yeah, so this would be like where our new proposed house would be.
Yeah.
This is our current house on one eighty-two.
Stonehouse, yeah.
Yeah, so it would end up using the same driveway entrance, this driveway kinda ends here, but the easement goes all the way through, which would give us access to the new lot. Yeah.
Easement through the little corner there.
And you haven't done the second.
No, uh, we do, oh yeah, we did the perk test, he's working on the septic design now, we have uh Envire Spect uh John doing that stuff.
So Pete came out?
Yeah, he came out and looked at it.
This is just sort of a concept right now.
Yes.
Wait, there's no like, what, sorry.
Right.
No, the only ones he's located is next to the pond.
Okay.
There hasn't been any.
Yeah, cuz I know.
Trying to find something there.
Yeah, cuz I know he had talked to you, I believe, about like what he wanted marked out and whatnot, and he went there a couple days in a row trying to make sure there was no wetland stuff that needed to be marked out, and you know, went to the lot next to it, the pond, everything and.
On this lot and what he located around the pond, and the next to the pond feeling.
Yeah, this lot, the, we created a few years ago, was, did have some.
Have some issues, yeah.
Some wet areas, yeah. But that's not the case, what you're saying.
Yeah.
I was gonna think of something like a hundred or two hundred feet, I don't remember. Christine, you remember?
Just alone that spot?
Yeah, we didn't end up getting rid of it. So we're.
Sounds kinda familiar.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, we own everything all the way around it on every side.
But except for across the street.
Yeah, except for across the street, that's, I think Barry owns that, and then the next closest person is um Greg Ellis. I think Barry owns the field.
Where's that shop?
Uh, it's like almost on the property that abuts the back of ours, like way out in the middle of, who even knows?
Okay, what do we, what do you think, Russ, what do we? Take a look at it, then. Accept, complete next.
So what is like?
Yeah, we've. Yeah, we're just, so we, I wasn't part of it when my dad did his, like, I mean, I did the, I did the work with Garza, but I didn't come to any of the town meetings, so like from here, I don't really know what the next steps or the next meetings are to get where we're getting the approval and everything.
So, so if we don't have an application yet, we, you know, we still need that, so.
Need a completed plan.
Yep.
And your, and um your surveyor usually handles that.
Yeah, so he, I know John, he doesn't really do the town meetings, he'll, he said he'll come to like the one when you guys are looking at everything, like to approve it, and he would be here to answer questions, but aside from that, he really leaves it up to the owners of the property, so that's why I'm kinda saying, I don't know what we're he, he'll be like as much help as he can, but he doesn't really come to the town meetings unless it's like the, the final meeting, yeah, for technical questions.
You don't, you don't tell him what he needs.
I was gonna say, maybe you can help them with the application process.
Yeah, just be pretty much sure this is much as he could provide, provide the other day, cuz Rodney's lost it in that first asset.
Yeah, so he hasn't, he hasn't been working, and we told him we were already on, cuz I had talked to you for the town meetings, he was like, I'll try to get the best that I can so you guys can go down and, you know, like propose it, but he was like, and then, like I said, he's working on the septic design stuff for there as well, so. Yeah, he just has to get the rest of that together.
We'll need for the next, we'll review this, I'll feed his comments of what I think needs to be submitted. So that we can accept it as complete, yeah, at that point, we'll schedule a public hearing, and we'll get all the butters, all that kinda stuff. We show them what Rangers looks like, so they know what this. Yeah.
To provide labels so that we can.
Yeah, so it would just, it would just be labels for me and Devon, right, cuz we own everything on all sides, or is it a cross beat of our road too? Okay, so it would just be Barry and.
Yeah.
And as well as your surveyor.
So you, you just. Make sure you write everything on this checklist unless you're asking for a waiver. You're gonna have a list of butters, and you're gonna have labels, it's uh free, free person. And uh. What we ask, two plans and then a bunch of smalls, is that what we said last time?
Two, I think we said two paper copies and one electronic.
Yeah.
PDF.
So it's this meeting, then you, then one more, then a public hearing.
Yes.
Then, at the public hearing is when we would have the that's when it would be done.
Yours is pretty straightforward, so I mean, it shouldn't be as complicated as Randy's.
Yeah, as far as the path of public hearing, would we be able to submit on a building permit at the same hearing, or you'd have to wait for a whole nother hearing, or whole nother?
Like could we submit for, if we had other? Like could we submit for, if we had everything else, could we submit for a building permit for that lot, like contingent on that being approved?
Right. No, we're over.
You're over five acres, so they're fine.
Five, yeah. Yeah, that, you're bad.
Yeah, he was saying, cuz we were just curious, like, I guess to kinda save us going to like a bunch more meetings, like if, at that final meeting, if we could put in for our building permit contingent on like it being approved.
I don't know if that's happened before Ken is on the select board, if they approved the building permits, not us.
We've done contingent, we've done.
Forgetting your.
Yeah, just so then, I mean, it's, I mean, like, it's, obviously it's like more work for everybody else, but it saves us coming for a whole nother thing for that. Yeah, if, no, if we could submit it at this, yeah.
You just go down to town office to grab, grab the copy of the building, they'll hand you a building permit.
Sorry. Yeah, I just didn't know if we could put it in at the same time and then they could just say, oh, it's contingent on that. Okay.
But it's easy to.
Okay, yeah, we did it for when we did the, the addition stuff on our house, so.
Right, so get the sign offs on the building permit, give it to the, um, select board assistant. The select board will conditionally approve it based on the planning board.
Driveway coming off.
The existing easement is regular.
The, the easement just has to make sure it gets to the property line.
Yeah.
Yeah, should that be part of their submission application?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I feel like this may not all happen before the next meeting. I don't know what your.
He told us to ask to be on for the next meeting.
Okay.
So I would assume if he told us to ask that he's gonna, I know he had, like I said, he had a lot more stuff together, but with the no internet and not getting plans printed, this is like what he had printed out to give us. So he was like, take this and do the best you can, I guess. And like the rest of the stuff, he needs to pull together and print. Okay.
Let me know what we think is missing in order to be a complete application so that we can schedule a public hearing.
Yeah.
And I'll tell them.
Okay. Yeah, cuz like I said, he's done like the, some stuff, it was like the internet issue. So like this is the plan he had printed out, but he might, the stuff you guys are asking for, like he might already have that done on another plan, he just couldn't get printed. So I can also see if like maybe he can e-send me stuff and maybe you can see it to see if he's got what he needs to have on it for that next thing. But he told us to ask about getting on the next.
And that's fine, and you can be, I just, it's probably in the perfect world, it's gonna be two more meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, so he doesn't need to come to the next.
Somewhere to.
Yeah, he just said he'll come to the last one so that if you guys had any like technical questions, stuff that we don't have any clue about, he'd answer that stuff.
Well, as far as this, this east, I just wanna make sure we don't, um, this, this road I know currently good, but that, that road is, is that road there?
That's our driveway to the.
But that's not there now.
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Okay, so the easement actually.
Yeah, so there's, there's the trail that goes all the way around the pond and then there's trails that go like onto Devon's lot. So there's kind of like an easement that almost goes.
Well, what we're thinking though, is obviously this thought has an easement across this, to get across that whole piece. And then someone has an easement to get up to there.
Yeah.
But this is, this must have an easement. That's what we need to also see is to make sure that the easement comes across that.
Yeah, cuz I think these two easements are currently a part of the, like, cuz this would be the new, yeah, it's part of the bigger one and then now that we're making it a separate law in between.
With that, with a, have a small thing like that.
Yeah.
Put a fly on your.
Now that.
If it's.
Is there a house?
No, so that's the proposed house. This house is an existing house, like the house we live in currently, and that's my brother's house.
Does this trail keep going?
No, uh.
Goes up into a clearing.
Yeah, this one though continues and is the one that goes like all the way around the backside of the pond and then comes out past our house on the other side of the pond, like the Tower Road, they call it. Yeah, they used to call it Harris Highway. So that loops like all the way around, so.
I think that's what Bruce is asking about. If this road doesn't be gone, why would there be an easement from this point to there right now?
Yeah, I'd, I think I'd have to ask John that, yeah.
This guy, this guy's gonna have the answer.
Yeah, it should be with the registered deeds and it should tell you.
Is that, that we didn't change anything on that?
We need a little bit more to get across.
Yeah, so you're saying we need to make sure that there's.
That the easement covers.
Yeah.
But that's just a second.
Yeah, so this, we were kinda using the easement as like a for now driveway to here, but essentially like if we got a permit for the driveway, there would be a driveway that goes there. It would almost be like a horseshoe. There would be access from the easement, but there would be a driveway on the lot too.
No, but.
No.
Just the road engine.
Yeah.
For, you got the curb cut.
So, yeah, that was kind of like the, for now, we were gonna use the easement that we had cuz it has access to the lot, but I can confirm with John, like you're saying, how make sure that extra like gets to that lot, yeah. Yeah, we own, yeah, we own this one, this one, this one, and then everything around it. Um, so this one is, we just transferred into mine and his name. Everything else is in mine and Devon's name, but my name is on, yeah. Yeah, but this one, once it's approved, will be put in mine and his name. So these two will have the same name on them. They're just not for the subdivision. Yeah, it's.
This and the lot.
Yeah, this, like I said, this one is in mine and Devon's right now, just cuz it's still a chunk of this, but once the subdivision's approved, this will go in mine and Jack's name and this is currently in mine and Jack's name, so we'll own both of those.
Just not worry about it. Get a curb.
Okay.
Because that way, we don't care if you drive. Cuz you'll have a driveway.
Or if I put a new curb cutting for the house instead. This is kinda wonky on. That ran through.
Off the can.
So, yeah.
Road agent.
I talked to the road agent.
Yeah, it's just kinda, it's.
One's on this guy's frontage and one's on this guy's.
Yeah.
Even though it's both the same people, but.
Yeah.
Well, just cuz.
It could be sold someday.
Yeah, it was, it was, we were just kind of trying to work with, cuz like my dad had built that other house, so that's whatever where he had the stuff. And it's the way we were trying to like configure the lot to fit the square and everything, but then also leave, cuz this is gonna just become my brother's property. So we wanted to leave him enough frontage.
He's a farm, after he takes the.
Yeah, just so that if later on he ever wanted to do anything, he still had the land and the frontage and the ability to do whatever he wanted to do.
Okay.
A list of.
Yeah, that would, I'd appreciate that just cuz it's a little confusing.
All right.
Thank you.
You keep a plan.
Were you wanting plans back? Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you guys for coming in. We'll see you, uh, in a few weeks.
It's not, you've been sitting here for an hour.
Okay, and now. Hi Sarah, how are you? You are up.
Um, maybe you'd get the microphone.
Oh, I think I have. Is it on? Yes. I don't know. Um, I just printed up two copies of what the mailer would actually look like, at least size wise and stuff, so that you guys could see it full size, make sure you agree with like the point size of the font and all of that, um. Uh, let's see.
No.
Well, I, I looked at it and sent you my comments, um, last week. I don't know if anybody else had. Or do you wanna just go through your memo?
Um, let's just, we can, we can run through the memo.
Memo.
Okay, so the mailer is meant to go out at the end of this month, um. And let's see, I guess the beginning of the memo is, do we have any comments on the content or the formatting of the mailer? Cuz if you guys are okay with that, we can move into the logistics of, um, getting it printed and, um, assigning a board member to be in charge of that, because the hope is that we'll have this out before Labor Day weekend if possible. So that it can be in people's mailboxes in advance of, um.
The potluck.
The potluck. Yeah, I can't remember which one is first. I guess Super Tuesday is.
The super lunch is the twelfth, I think.
It's the twelfth, okay, so it's the first Friday that we'll want it to be in everybody's mailboxes for.
So this will be by, by next Friday, this will be in everybody's mailbox by next Friday.
Hopefully, well, it doesn't have to be by next Friday cuz next Friday is the last Friday of August, but hopefully it'll be to the post office if possible by next Friday or Saturday.
Because Labor Day's Monday.
Yep.
Well, I liked how you, um, changed the format a little bit or moved the, the graphics, the today's zoning compared to tomorrow's. It looked a little wonky in the other version and I'm, I'm sure it was to get text to fit, but I liked, I liked this change, it made more sense.
Well, and the previous version you guys saw was thrown together very quickly to get content in front of you to respond to, so.
Yep.
Um, yeah, this, the layout feels a little bit, I don't know, more like a newsletter and.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I was able to fit a little bit more content this way by shuffling things around.
It actually looks more interesting than most of the mailers we send out. So this might get people to actually look at it.
I don't know what, um, like the picture of the town center is a great picture, but it's not housing, so it feels a little weird, but I don't know what you'd put there instead.
I'm not sure what else we could put there without being a picture of somebody's housing.
I know, I know.
I think that's fine. It ties, it gets people into it.
Yep.
But we can swap that out if you have.
I don't have a better suggestion.
Everybody have a chance to look at it? Any other comments?
I have one question, um, it is on the inside right page, um, that talks about the overlay district that would expand on the town owned properties.
Mm-hmm.
Are we really doing all three town owned properties? I thought we had discussed one.
I thought we were going to put it to the public to determine, but we can revise that if I misunderstood that. I think it's this.
I, I don't feel like that's where we left it, but I could be wrong. I thought we had left it just next to the school that we would put the overlay.
I seem to remember that conversation.
Right, I don't know how Christine did.
Yeah, no, I remember talking about it. I don't, um. I don't know that, there was a conclusion, but I do remember that we talked about it.
Maybe just adding, um, would expand these opportunities to include up to pre-owned town properties with community input.
I don't know, I thought we just determined that we would go with the one as to, because it felt the least controversial.
Yeah, I, I mean, you could say include a town owned parcel and suggest the one next to the school is a possibility.
That might be a better way.
I, I just want, I want for that way that not.
Town owned properties, not mention any particular property.
Yeah.
Well, the one next to the school has certainly come up before. I, I mean, I don't wanna pretend that we haven't. That's not, I mean, it is one we've talked about.
Okay, that's an easy change.
Mm-hmm. And then maybe at that next paragraph instead of saying in particular, just.
Yeah.
Highlight that.
Can I see the small version up there?
I don't have.
Yeah, I didn't print out.
Yeah, this is the new small version right there.
Anything else? Um, I can volunteer to get it mailed.
Okay.
We'll probably use Savron again.
Um, I'll reach out to them to find out what format they'd like to receive it in and I'll, you know, take off the inside front, left, back, um, notes.
Okay.
And I'll send the final markup to you once I touch base with Savron.
Great. Yeah, and I wanna just touch base with them on, they sent an invoice for the posters, but the process for getting reimbursed may take longer than what they're used to.
Right.
So I don't want them to worry. They will get paid. It just may take a little longer.
They will be reimbursed Sunday, um.
Yeah.
And we didn't, oh, we didn't address the color. Is white fine with you guys?
This to read on white.
Yeah.
Okay. And, um, can we finalize the dates for the community forums in October and November, just so that we can include them here in case people choose to read this and they don't choose to read the postcards that we send them down the road?
Were they, I can't remember.
We had put them as, uh, the sixth of November, I believe, and the twenty-first of October.
Those are.
Regular business.
Regular planning board meetings.
I mean, the only problem with setting them is if we have.
Another hearing.
Busy schedule.
Right. We can keep it tentative on here, but we might wanna kind of make a backup plan in case there are hearings during your regular meetings, um, what would make sense.
Well, we know we have two coming up, but I think if everything goes well, they'll be done before October twenty.
I have November fourth as the first meeting in November.
Yeah, were we going to do it on the sixth to have a different weeknight?
I.
I remember that as part of the conversation, but I don't know if it coincides with a different meeting that we were trying to tag on to.
Um, I have to look at the, the town calendar. I don't know.
What was the October date that you had?
The twenty-first.
Which would be our second meeting of the month, Tuesday.
Seems like that should be okay. The only one that might still be hanging around is Randy's, right?
So we would schedule Randy first. And it would probably go quick and then we would.
Yeah.
Form.
Yeah. If we need it.
If we need it. Pretty cool.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't take up too much time, so we'd still do the forum, March twenty-first.
Oh, I was looking at Thursday then. Distracted.
Do we wanna move the November date to be during the regular planning board meeting?
What else, what else do you think we're gonna have going on if we, unless we have another subdivision? We just had two.
There's nothing.
I mean, we don't have anything that we know of, but.
I mean, I think we can.
I, I. Yeah, and I don't think we should push it any further than that because we're gonna need to have the first hearing for finalized language in December.
In December to get a hearing in January.
Yeah, that gives us one meeting in November to decide what we wanna present for the first hearing. So.
Okay.
I think we stick with that date.
November fourth.
Fourth, yeah.
Uh, or do you do wanna do it the sixth? Or do you do want to do it the 6th or we want to do it on the 4th?
Regular meeting night.
Regular meeting night. It's fine. We can do the 4th.
Yeah, we, we'll make it happen.
Okay.
I mean, we're, we've, we've been all this year working, doing the heavy lifting, you. The heavy lifting. So now it's, you know, it's really the home stretch. It's now it's time for the public to give us the input.
It is, it is.
But the hours of us going through.
Right.
Methodically through everything, those are, those are, those days are gone. So I.
Well, provided the community likes what we've created and feels comfortable with the changes, then yes.
Good.
Okay, moving on to our September events. Let's see, we have the boards already up at the town offices.
There was nothing added since we had put them up. Bill helped me put them up. Nothing added as of last Friday.
Okay.
Well, there was a problem.
Uh oh.
And who would have known? The tax collector and the town clerk took vacation last week.
I know.
Closed.
Okay.
So that's why you had nobody. It was.
Well, we have a few more weeks.
You know that would happen. That's.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, we'll be there for now anyway. We have a lot of opportunities still to share this with people because they're going to receive it in their mailbox. They can come to the potlucks. They can come to the harvest festival and then they can come to the forums.
There'll be other opportunities.
They have a lot of opportunities to, to engage with this material.
Okay.
Let's see. So I did want to confirm who was going to be doing the first Friday potluck and who was going to be doing the super lunch. Because I know we had volunteers last time, but that was a month ago.
I can do the super lunch.
Okay.
On the 12th.
What, when is the date of the year on?
Oh, the 5th. That's the beginning of Labor Day. Oh, no, it's not.
Yeah, I'm the same style. I might be back in time, but I'm not sure I'm going to be away that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I'd, I'd rather not commit.
So, so nine, five, Friday.
Dinner.
It's the Friday. That's, is that a dinner or is it lunch?
That's the dinner.
That's the dinner one. Okay.
Well, you can put me down for sure for the 12th.
Okay. Will you be able to bring the boards back to the town offices?
Yep. Uh, so I can bring them to somebody at the planning board meeting on the 2nd of September for whoever's going to go to the potluck. And then I can pick them up for the super lunch.
So this is going to be, who's going to be, besides the planning board representative? Or two that are going to represent at the potluck. Is Sarah there too?
I'm not at the potlucks. I'm planning to go to the harvest festival.
Okay. So you're not at super lunch or potluck. Okay.
What was that?
And is the idea that people just engage with the boards there? It's not.
Yeah, you're there to answer questions.
Be there to answer questions. Yes.
You and me, Friday night. Okay.
Turn out at.
I'll be around that weekend, which is amazing. I'm actually going to be the first Friday dinner.
But it's probably the slot.
It's always.
Friday night, potluck, Russ and I are going to do it.
Okay.
Or anybody else wants to do it, they can do it with us, but.
Super lunch?
I'm very tentative here. It depends.
Oh, because of your name.
Re-replacement Monday.
Yeah.
I can do the super lunch.
Okay, so I'll. I'll do the super lunch for you. So we'll both, we'll tag two.
Super lunch is at, I think 11:30.
It's 11.
11, 11.
So the only issue I have with harvest festival is I'm going to be wearing a couple hats because I'm, you know, with the historical society table. And I have to man the Little Red Schoolhouse for a couple hours. So I can, I can be around a little, but I wouldn't count on me being the main anchor planning board member on our table.
I'll be out of town.
You're out of town. Yeah, wow.
I'd be all.
Sunday, the 21st.
21st.
Sorry, telephone.
I'll probably be mobile by then.
You could sit in a chair.
Yeah, I have to sit, but I should be getting.
So that's why.
Okay.
Because Sarah will be there. So we have that. Kathy, will you be there too?
I'll try.
She'll probably get.
Be an off potluck, but I can definitely take a, take a turn.
Take a turn at the table too.
So I think you have Bill and Jim tentatively for the harvest festival.
Right. I can a little be there.
Or harvest festival.
Cook sausage for the land squall.
Okay, so we have a lot of, a lot of you able to filter through. So I guess my main question is, who will bring the boards? To get it set up because I will show up, harvest festival begins at 10?
10.
I think they're setting up other things. So, so then they're coming from.
From the, from the.
So, super lunch, I can get them to the hards.
So I'll get, drop them off to you after the super lunch.
Yeah.
And you're going to bring them to us the, on the, the next meeting for Russ and I for the potluck?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So I feel like that's mostly covered and we're in good shape. There will be bodies there. So that's great. The next question is, do you guys all feel comfortable enough with the changes that are proposed to speak about them off the cuff? At any of these events or all of these events?
I do.
I know. Without knowing what people, questions people will ask.
Right.
That's true.
If we had some talking points that, you know, you know what I mean?
That's where I'm going with this.
Yeah.
Do we need to, do you guys want me to develop?
I would say so.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm still having a hard time with the, because I really wasn't good in math.
Maybe then.
In school. So I, I'm still having a hard time with the whole density bonus and that whole workforce housing.
Complicated.
It really is. And so I'm, I'm.
I would not expect many people to actually want to get in.
Drawings are so helpful.
I can think of one or two.
Yeah.
I'll say read the, here's the formula.
Here's the formula. Tell me.
Okay. And then what time does harvest festival finish?
It's usually at 2, right? 2 o'clock. Okay. Oh, 4.
Yeah, it runs down.
Around 2 though.
It's winding down around 2. Yeah, right. When's the band plan?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so what, what time would be appropriate to pack up all of our stuff?
We usually just play it by ear to see if people are not coming around anymore, then. Yeah, okay.
It's definitely.
By the time the band plays.
Okay.
Yeah.
Definitely.
I just want to know if anybody's going to like, who's, who's going to be sticking around?
Yeah, it could take a later time of the day.
Okay, okay. I just, I don't want to be abandoned with it and not know what to do with all of this stuff. And I'm a little bit uncomfortable since I don't know your community. I feel like it's important that even if it's not one of you, somebody from Temple is representing. Okay.
We won't leave you hanging out.
Okay. Don't leave me hanging out.
So I think the thing that if we could, Sarah, would, if we have a cheat sheet of some sort.
Close notes.
Yeah, yeah. To, you know, PRD, here's an example of a smaller, here's an example, a big one, you know, here's a, we already know we can explain a typical subdivision with three acres, 300 feet of furniture, blah, blah, blah. We, well, we're not really discussing ADUs, but we can, if we need to talk to that, we're pretty well versed on that now. And we know, you know, that we allow detached and attached, but it's the workforce housing more so, but PRD is a little bit that I would love to have some sort of a cheat sheet and examples of, hey, if you had, well, kind of like what you've done here with 12 acres.
I mean, we could probably use. I like the examples.
And the boards.
Show somebody that they didn't read it and know.
Right. And the boards will be there too. So be able to refer to those.
That's true. That's true. That'll help.
Yeah.
How about I take some of the information of this as a guide? I chew it up a little bit so it's easy to glance, but also give you a little bit more because anybody could have read this already and they might have a need for a little bit more information.
And maybe we have a few extras of these for the table as well.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. But I will, I'll put something together and I'll send it to the planning board email. When do you want that by? Tomorrow morning. Does morning end at 11:59? Because then maybe I could.
I'd probably be just before the next meeting, right?
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I can definitely get that done.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
The first people they're going to need is Russ and I for.
Yes.
Yeah.
For, for nine.
Yeah, and we, I'm just like, do we have another meeting before? Yes, we have, we have one more meeting before the potluck. So on the 2nd. So that should be fine.
And are you guys planning on me attending the next meeting or the second meeting in September? Because I was thinking it made a little bit more sense to attend the second meeting in September, once we have some feedback to work with, to incorporate into the forums. Okay.
Yep.
So moving on to the public forums, there's a few things to discuss here. The first one is the opportunity to have the cooperative extension facilitate one or both of the forums, which can go really well, but it does mean introducing another outsider into the conversation, which can also not go well. And since you guys, you know, had a lot of events with Ivy Van and previous hop work, I guess I kind of want to take the temperature for what you think is going to work best.
I mean, I can speak to my experience with people from the UNH Cooperative Extension and they've all been fantastic, like really good facilitators. Just asking questions and encouraging. I haven't found anybody to be confrontational or to bristle and when someone, you know, feels really passionate about something. So I.
That's been my experience too. So I'm glad to hear that.
I've done a lot of stuff with them. So I mean, that's, I'm a big fan. And I don't think we've really had much pushback in the community or recently. So, which doesn't mean there won't be, but.
I think it's also helpful to have somebody else that's facilitating that.
Yes.
Well, they're, they're, they're free.
Yep.
Yeah, no.
I was thinking of the gentleman that, what's he, he's really well known, works for the state. And he came in and did speak for us one or two times.
George Regan?
Yes. Guy's amazing.
Yeah, he's great.
I don't think he's.
He's New Hampshire Housing.
He's not, I don't know if he's necessarily for great.
I could, but I, people are really, I mean, we could invite him if he wants to come and listen, but.
Yeah.
I see him all the time. So.
Maybe the cooperative, maybe it's the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll reach out and, and get these events on their calendar. The other question is if you want this to be a duplicate event and run the same program at both forums? Or if you want them to be designed differently? I think there's merits to each, but again, I feel like you did everything, each event was different in your last round of hop work. And so I'm trying to take the temperature for what you felt worked well.
It was different, but also I found, I think by the last one, and you guys, correct me if I'm wrong, but she did go over some repeat information because there were new people at that last one, like to sort of summarize, but.
Maybe.
Ivy, yeah, that one in the church.
Yeah, I went to that one. That was the best attended one.
I feel like she did sort of backtrack a little bit at that one intentionally. But.
She read the audience and realized that it'll probably be the way.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you have a preference?
I mean, I, I think it's the same kind of thing. Like I would plan for a duplicate, but if after the first one, there are things that people want to dig into deeper, then maybe we modify it.
There's a good chance that people go to the first one, not go to the second.
Right, right. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because they would think that the material isn't going to be the same.
Right.
And then the next question is, is in terms of facilitation and all of that, like yes, we'll have UNH here, but do you guys want to be presenting any of this material? Or would you rather be in the background?
I mean, I think we have to do an introduction for sure.
Okay.
I mean, are we just going to say, hi, everybody, this is with the Temple Planning Board and welcome tonight to our forum and we've been, we're working on this. And Sarah, what do you have to say?
That works.
No, we can, we should probably.
Do the introduction.
Yeah, we, we shouldn't leave it all.
Yeah, summarize what's going to happen.
What has happened already and what the goal is.
Okay. And you guys will put that language together?
Sure.
Okay. Just checking. I can if you want, but. And then the next thing is, I was thinking it could begin with a, a presentation that's really going in a little bit more depth than the mailer, but also covering everything that's in the mailer because hopefully people will have read the mailer and that's why they're showing up for the forum. And then doing the small group discussions. And then opening up for, you know, bringing things back in, you know, whatever. I don't know, issues that people have in the small group discussions, strengths, that sort of things could be brought back to the larger group and then an opportunity for written feedback after the event. Does that sound like?
Sounds like the charrette.
It's going to be a little bit like a charrette, but it's not going to take quite as much time. I'm thinking, you know, we're probably going to be looking at about an hour and a half. Unless you guys think that that feels wrong. I'm trying to read Bill's face and I can't.
It's going to be fine if there's 30 or 40 people, but if there's a dozen, it's.
Right. We're going to have to tailor it.
Depends on how many.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair. We can do that.
There is that possibility too.
Yeah. Yes, I guess it would be based on the attendance because.
That's, and that's very common and that's fine. We can definitely.
Need to break off into a small group.
Yeah, if it's 12 people, we can just kind of circle up and have a conversation with what people's concerns are and, you know, what their hopes are for this, this change. Okay. Well, moving on to next steps, I did not edit the memo properly, which I apologize for. Initially, I was going to give you draft presentation materials tonight, but I kind of wanted to have this conversation before I drafted any, and I forgot to remove that from the list. So I don't have any for you. But I will have some materials for you guys to review for the September 16th meeting. We want to distribute the mailer the third week of August for the community events. September 16th, we review the materials. October 10th, we have another hop report due the week of October 13th, we'll have the second mailer grow out, which will just be a save the date postcard. The community forums will be October 21st and November 4th. For the November 18th meeting, we'll have revisions to the draft ordinances based on the community input presented to you folks. And then mailer three will go out following that in advance of the first public hearing. Are we missing anything? This feels too easy tonight. I'm sorry. Because you're right. All the heavy lifting has already.
All the heavy lifting is done.
Just going back to the community forums, I think we just need to think through how we do that that evening because it sounds like it's going to be more engaging and like having presentation and some breakouts and like, how are we going to get our business done? Like.
Right, and how.
Do not be like sitting in a line here.
Right.
So we just, as we get closer to that, I think we have to just think through logistically, like how do you want that evening to flow? Because we will be having an informal meeting plus.
I think it'll be a little bit easier to take the temperature of that as we get nearer.
Yeah.
So with the next, well, the mailer two going out the week of the 13th, you guys will already know following your first meeting of the month, what you're going to have scheduled.
Right.
For the 21st. So if you do have a subdivision coming through, then the, the the forum could be scheduled for 7:30 instead of 7:00 or something like that. Or should the forum be earlier?
Yeah, I was going to say I'd do it the other way around. Like we would have our business at the end.
Or us come early.
We can, yeah. If there's, I would, yeah, I would say if there's an application we need to review, we do that early, but if it's just regular business. We can, yeah, if there's, I would, yeah, I would say if there's an application we need to review, we do that early, but if it's just regular business, then we can do it on the, at the end.
Do you want to still keep a seven o'clock meeting time to begin the forum?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
That gives us time if we need to do something earlier.
Yeah.
Okay.
This kind of stuff we can discuss in the group email, scheduling, administrative stuff, it's perfectly legitimate for us to talk about that sort of stuff.
Okay, well, if we don't have any more questions or comments.
So Sarah, you'll reach out to the?
To UNH.
UNH Cooperative Extension.
Yeah, I'll read it, reach out to them and get us on their schedule now that we have dates. I'll add the dates to the mailer and make those other changes about the workforce housing, the town on properties, and take the labels off the top of the pages, and we'll be good to go.
Thank you. So before you leave, I don't want to keep you too long, but if you don't mind, just so you're aware, like I made a list of the changes that we're gonna have to make aside from this because of the legislative changes. So I don't know if you wanna stick around for that, or you just wanna see, I mean, there's not, there's not.
Up to that right now.
There's not a ton, but.
The legislative updates?
Yeah, so I drafted a couple things here.
It's not, not electronic.
I sent it electronic, I did it this afternoon, so I will send an electronic version. I think there was enough for everyone. And accept that I don't have one now from Sarah, but it's okay, I'll send it electronically. It's okay. So I, I'm sure, I don't know if everybody saw the guidance from NHMA, or if anybody else went to that, to the webinar, there was a webinar about this stuff too. So I just, I drafted a few changes based on the legislative changes, and it's really not terrible. There's definitions that have changed for accessory dwelling units attached and detached, so those three new definitions. And the change is really at the state level, they now say that instead of requiring or mandating that everyone allow an attached accessory dwelling unit, now they can have one of each, and so they're just clarifying what that means. Under the general provisions, the next section, one vehicle now instead of two for parking, and that carries into the ADU zoning as well. Yep. Same, or was there one other thing in, oh, and then the interior door for an attached ADU is not required anymore, so that would come out.
Yeah, where was that, was it?
Flip it back to the front page. This one.
Okay, that's right, no, I did read that.
Then parking for detached, same thing, one vehicle. I'm gonna skip over that next one for a second. Under administration, they moved the RSA six seventy-four fifty-one to RSA one fifty-five A, so that's a minor change. That's the building code and fire code enforcement. And so I, for us, it's a minor change, for others, it may be more. But that's not a huge deal. And then the last one is just, again, it's administration, so let's maybe focus on this administration one first, that section seven inspections. They now allow for a approved agency to do building inspections, it doesn't have to be the town building inspector. So I think we need to have legal counsel look at our zoning sections for inspections to just make sure.
Would, would be an approved.
There's a whole criteria, there's a guidance document that they put out. I, I think that was one of the attachments to the meetings, if you look at guidance on building inspections. There's like three or four page documents, and there's checklists. For the most part, under this, it's gonna fall to the select board to update, but for our zoning, there's just that one section, section seven, letter A, where it talks about code enforcement, and there's, I think there's three places where it specifies code enforcement, which I, I think we would just have to say for an approved agency. But I, I want to make sure, you know, our town attorney reviews that before we propose anything there.
It does seem more like a selectman issue.
Yeah, and you'll see in my next document, there's more specific responsibilities there. So then back to this definitions, article two, commercial use. So basically, the new law says that you can put in multifamily housing in a commercial zone, or, you know, residential dwellings in a commercial zone, and correct me if I'm misinterpreting. And so the guidance, we don't have a commercial zoning district, but we do allow commercial use by special exception. So I think it would apply in those cases based on my reading of it. But again, I do think we need to have town council just take a look at that.
Yeah, absolutely, because my interpretation was we don't have commercial zoning, therefore it doesn't apply.
Right, but if you did the legislative webinar,
Yeah.
then they, NHMA,
It's.
they said, check with town council, because there, our definition of commercial use is different than their definition.
Right.
So we just need to have that checked.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm just asking, I mean, or bringing to the board that we should reach out to our town attorney on those two at this point, before we draft any changes, and the other stuff I, I think is minor, but it's for review and we can talk more about it. Um, no, the other ones, then we'll go to the next page. So this last page is not zoning ordinance, but changes that we would need to make at some point. The issuing building permits on class six roads, this doesn't go into effect until July twenty twenty-six, but this is a select board responsibility to plan, come up with this liability waiver, there's criteria involved, because I put the bill in there that you can look at with the RSA.
So the person building on a classic road would need to sign a waiver of liability, fire protection, things like.
Everything.
Yeah.
Utilities, town maintenance. As long as they have a sign that do that liability waiver, and it's filed with the registry of deeds.
What about the insurance?
I guess.
It's all on the owners.
That's right.
It's amazing that it passed, but the.
Can I, Sarah, do you know better than me, but like when I read the description, so it talks about municipalities that require frontage on a class five or better. Does that mean, so if we, because we have that current?
That's right.
But it doesn't mean we're exempt from the other.
Right, this is mandates that anybody can build on class six, but they get zero town services.
I find that part of this very confusing, and I'm hoping that somebody's going to shed light on that very soon, because most communities have a requirement that you have frontage on a class five or better road, and so my interpretation of this is that you would still need to get a variance, but then you don't go through the same process of getting select board approval in addition to that, and getting, you know, a planning board input.
But doesn't it say specifically in the NHMA document that they don't have to get a variance?
No, it says they do, if you have that in, if you if you have it written on a class five or better road, however, the municipal ordinance must clearly state that this requirement by defining the road as a class five or better, if the zoning ordinance does not require frontage on a class five road, a variance from the ZBA would still be required to build.
So they do have to get a variance then? This is gonna end up in court.
It's gonna end up in court. So anyways.
It's, I agree with you.
In any case, it's a select board issue at this point, it's not something we change, however, the next one does apply to us, and that is relative to building and subdivision on class five or better, class five, I'm sorry, class six or a private road, which falls in subdivisions and PRDs. So basically, it's saying that we don't, approval doesn't require a comment from the planning board if it's a building on a class six or a private road for a new road. So again, this is one of those, I think we need to talk to town council about to have them look at our road and utility standards, there's several references that say approval by the board. But there's one big section that said it only applies to new streets dedicated to the town. So it's the private road piece that.
Class six. Class six, so you can subdivide, and the planning board can't say anything, is that allowed?
Again, it's really confusing. So again, it's one of those, I think it needs, we need our attorney to review.
What do you think about that, Jim?
Yeah.
I know exactly.
Good question about this liability, going back to liability.
Yeah.
Uh, on the class six road, does that, will that apply on private roads as well?
Uh, I believe it's just class six.
But private roads, not mean but maintained by the town or not?
That's correct.
You mean like a PR, like a PRD, one of Randy's PRDs, one of those.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. But the fire department will still show up, though, you're not waving any.
To go on your road to go.
Yeah, it's a private road, you're not.
Private road, right.
It did not wave anything.
Yeah.
However, this new thing requires classics roads.
Yeah, so if you built a house with classics.
Well, we kind of knew this was coming.
Right, some of them.
This is coming because there's a lot of small towns, i.e. Stoddard.
Yeah.
They were, they seemed to be the, they were, they really pushed this, but in a lot of other small towns like them, but, you know, it was in a lot of the second homes or camps that are on those old logging road, you know, class six road.
Right.
So somehow it, it got momentum, and it.
Yeah, but as usual.
It made it through.
It's so ambiguous and poorly written.
Well, that's.
Like our petition warrant articles.
Will likely be sussed out in court. So then as part of that same one for the building and subdivision on class six or private roads, the zoning board appeal period is amended to thirty days before it just said reasonable amount of time, again, that's not us, it's ZBA, and their rules of procedure. And then the last one, actually, sorry, there's two more. Um, mandates that a land use board member recuses themselves from voting on matters if they're on both boards, they can't vote on both applications. Um, so that gets updated in our rules of procedure.
Yeah, but in, and we don't, we, we don't have anybody.
I don't think so, you're not on, yeah.
We don't, um, we, at Temple, all the years I was on the planning board, I, I I was always just told you couldn't, it was a conflict of interest, you know, how, it couldn't be on both boards. But then it happened for a little while, a few years ago, and I thought, well, I thought we said we weren't gonna do that, so I never knew if it was actual RSA.
I think there is an RSA, just covers our own.
It allows the board member to decide, and then there's court cases that have challenged, but yeah, now it's, it's mandated. Mandated, you can't be vote on both, you can sit on both, you just can't vote. And then this is relative to that approved agencies, which I mentioned earlier, that's, and this is a select board, building permit, your building permit stuff.
Again, with that, just a couple years of approved agencies, are they referring to a third party?
Oh, yeah, sorry, it's, so it doesn't have the approved agencies stuff in that document I gave you, does it?
No, it's just.
There's another document that talks specifically about the criteria, which I have.
But if you have a building inspector, it's a moot point. Or is it when there's a conflict with the building inspector?
It allows the, an applicant to hire someone.
Oh, other than the town?
Other than the town, because the, I think the thinking was that in some cases towns were not approving fast enough, or the building inspector wasn't available, that kind of thing, so it gives them, the applicant, the flexibility to use an outside.
The third party.
Third party, yeah, so.
Makes sense. So not, I was looking at it the wrong way, so not designed to make it more red tape, to actually design it to actually fast track things.
It's designed for fast track, you can pass that down to Matt. Although it has my notes on it, so I will take it back.
Get it back to you.
Good. Good, well, we get them.
So that's what I had, and if I missed any, let me know, but, so I will reach out to our attorney and have him check it, check on those few that we talked about.
Sarah, did you have anything to add to any of what we just discussed?
Nothing that I would like in the official record.
Okay.
So I, I mean, I think we can talk about it more at a future meeting, but I guess I'm thinking the ones that are pretty straightforward are one zoning amendment, and it just says to comply with state statutes, so that we're not presenting fifteen. Um, but we can think about that more and see how things shake out, and a couple of them, we may not, you know, the couple that I put in gray, we may not need to present if the attorney looks at it and says, you're fine, but.
Sarah, you don't have to stick around for the next.
I think that, that's it, I just wanted. I just wanted you to be aware that we were gonna have others to present.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
For everything you do. Take care of the log. Uh, old business, all purpose storage expansion, have we heard anything at the selectmen's office? Nothing?
Nope.
Nothing, yeah. Pickets. Uh, the mapping conversion.
We talked about.
That's supposed to be, Tori talked about that. Uh, solar.
So we are, I don't know if, did you do the webinar on the, you did, so there was a webinar on the, they, they put out a document now, draft language for a zoning ordinance, for solar zoning ordinance, um, which we can talk about in more detail maybe at the next meeting, but we'll.
Yes, yes. I was supposed to try and go to the ground, but I guess this.
And I, yeah.
So we'll shoot for it in the, in the agenda for the next one?
Yeah.
Well, we'll shoot for it, if you can make it happen, then that's great.
And just keeping in mind that we're gonna have.
Yeah, I know, we have a lot, yeah, nobody's gonna, you know, we're.
Other stuff to present.
The flood insurance program?
We got an email about that, I think, right?
Yeah, the, you know, they're pushing for us to get on board with it, we're one of the few towns that isn't. The excuse in the past has been, well, there's no flood maps for here, but they're supposed to appear any year now.
It's been years.
Tell us every year, next year.
Other towns keep needing updated maps that are getting flooded and they're priority.
Yeah, but I mean, there are real reasons we should adopt it, except if we don't have flood zones, then it's kind of meaningless, but.
But it does allow residents to get flood insurance.
Correct.
At a cheaper rate.
Without it, they cannot get the federal flood insurance. Many, if you're actually in a flood zone, many commercial mortgage lenders will not lend. Insurers will not typically insure, except for absorbent premiums, so there are real benefits to having the program.
It was an inquiry, inquiry, I can't say that word, last year from a resident who wanted to purchase flood insurance, that was not able to.
Is there a downside?
Well, the downside is that if you're in a flood zone and you want to build there, there are requirements for how you have to build. Um, you've got to have a certain height above the, the flood line, and although it can be a garage underwater, they don't care about that, but the house has to be.
And utilities have to be.
Utilities.
We're pretty sure based on what the discussions they've had with us, where they think the, how the maps are gonna work out, it's only a few really small isolated spots.
Right.
And, and years ago, that was always a concern, myself and a few other people, we just thought it was just gonna be another way to have more red tape for the building permit process, and then I think we, we solved that problem by simply having a building permit, say, are you in a flood zone, and if you say no, you're moving forward with your building permit, because if you say yes, then yes, then the. Because if you say yes, then yes, then, then you have the hoops to jump through and by not having the flood plan insurance, I guess that.
Yeah, but I mean, you're right. We, we don't have many areas in town that appear to be. One of them is my field, but.
I was gonna say down near Nicholas.
Yeah, I can't think of any real flooding issues that we've had.
Well, my field, part of my field floods every spring. But.
And Sarah, the bottom half of Sarah Drive, which is down below you.
Yeah.
Randy's land down.
The smallest downside would be, it might be some areas in town that could be unbuildable if the flood zone was eight feet high.
Right.
But that's really unlikely.
Right. Right, that's the other thing, yes.
That's the thing, it's always. I've always questioned the whole concept of building in floods.
Well, look at Florida.
Yeah, well, and I, you know, I drove down in Louisiana.
Yeah.
I took that southern route, route one, all the way up Mississippi to Louisiana after Patina and stuff.
But there's really nothing we can do, right, until they.
They don't have their house.
No, we can adopt.
Based on, without the flood maps.
Yes. Yep.
People can get the national, through the National Flood Insurance Program, they can get the National Flood Insurance, whether they're in a flood zone or not. Now, most people would not bother if they're not in a flood zone, but.
Do we, is this something that is just voted on by the boards or is this something that goes to the voters?
Goes to voters.
Yeah.
So do we? So I guess the question's going to be, how many things do we want to bring into the booth next March? And I'm certainly not trying to kick the can because I've warmed up to it and I feel less threatened by any red tape from that, this whole adopting this program, but because I was always my stance.
Tried many times.
But how many things do we want to have in the booth?
So we would have.
For the poor voters in March.
We'd have the legislative changes. We have workforce housing. We have PRD. Potentially solar. And flood. Is there anything I'm missing?
We'll see what happens.
Well, so not only is it a lot of ballots, but then we also have to, we have to do our hearings.
Right.
Yeah, which you can incorporate several things.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
That's.
This is like the legislative stuff is a no brainer. We have no choice, right? These two could be one and these two could be one.
So we can, we'll keep it on the agenda for discussion.
It would be an easy temperature to take now that, once we look at the GIS, turn on the flood zones.
That we haven't been mapped officially.
Yeah, now the thing is, those are not the federal flood zones that would be on the federal flood zone maps, but it gives an indication.
FEMA has not officially mapped us. We have preliminary maps, which we've had for like three years, but they're not official maps. Which we could, we could adopt the preliminary maps for guidance, yeah.
And it literally showed.
Let me reach out to the flood.
Show it showed Sarah Druck.
Yeah.
I opened on the Sharon Tuffle. There was one little spot and that was pretty much it, wasn't it?
There's a little section on the, I think, actually, it is property.
Property.
Yeah.
And Randy's field next to it.
There might have been a little bit by the reservoir too, but it wasn't.
There wasn't a lot of land.
There was no houses.
Temple's surrounding.
No existing houses.
Surrounding areas.
So I'll reach out to the state flood insurance coordinator and just ask them, we can just look at the draft language and see if it feels manageable.
So I don't know what you guys think, but it's probably, we're eight minutes and nine, I think we've.
Yes.
How we can, the other items on the agenda, we can just push those off the next meeting, if we ever get to them. I don't know if we the way we're going, if we ever will, but.
Maybe I can just share my. So I let Bruce know, I'm, I'm gonna miss two meetings. The second meeting in September and the first meeting in October. I will try to call in. My son's having surgery and so I need to be with him out of the country. But I will try to zoom in and participate electronically. I did reach out to Murray and asked if he would be available to be in person here. He's our alternate and he's committed. He said he would be available, so. He said he's reading minutes, he's trying to get up to speed and hopefully we'll be able to fully participate while on the way.
No big deal, we're just gonna have two hearings for two different. I'm like, that's okay.
Well, and you can, you can reach me on WhatsApp. I won't.
Still be able to reach you.
Call service, I'll have my laptop. I, yeah, I should be able to connect electronically to the meeting, so.
Yeah, so I might miss September second. I should be okay for the rest after that.
As long as we have four of us.
I'm going on the second.
And you're gonna go on the second, so we should probably talk about that right now.
I'll be here on the second. I'll be here, I only till.
In September.
So the second meeting, September, you're not around the twenty first?
I should be around for that.
Oh, okay, so we're getting confused between the second meeting and the second.
Yeah, I know, delivering my.
September second, we were talking about, accepting two applications is complete.
Right.
So if I, by this weekend, circulate, or everybody circulates to be in comments, then we can get them back to them, so they have a week to.
Yeah.
And accepting was completion, as long as we have a formal.
Yeah, they just have to be on the agenda. And Kathy, if you could just make sure the map and lot number is on the agenda as well, so people know.
But potentially, we could have two hearings for both subdivisions on the twenty fourth when you're gone.
Is it, it's the sixth?
Is the second?
I won't be here.
But potentially, we could be having the final of others hearing for both of them.
I think the PRD is going to take.
Randy's might take an extra meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was thinking the opposite.
Yeah, I, well, yeah.
Well, we'll get through it. Either way, you're gonna follow this, the hearing. Both of those, because you're gonna miss the October first, first meeting in October as well.
I'm back on the tenth. Well, if all goes well, I essentially could come back, but he's had some complications.
Well, it's the same, it was.
Planning to be there longer than necessary.
It goes better than you thought. Not just because we want you back.
I know. I know. He seems to be improving slightly.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.